Curriculum student development committee of Madison Public Schools System. And we look forward to presentation this morning. And we had an introduction to some extent at our board retreat. So we're very excited to hear what you have to report today. And I just plan on turn it over to Gail to introduce our presenters of our topic.
You so much. Thanks for your time this morning. We really appreciate it. We do feel that the topic today is of great interest, not only to the field of education and to the work of the curriculum committee, but also just in terms of how we prepare our students for an AI literate future. I wanted to start by introducing just kind of how we started this work and where our journey has been last year when AI became in the a presence in our classrooms. So whether or not we invited it, it became clear that we had some work to do as a school system around creating some guidelines and some materials and approach to developing AI literates for the future. So this summer on August 18th, we met about 50 people from across the system. All the administrators were there, central office was there, coordinators from all disciplines were there, math and literacy coaches, library media specialists, and our instructional technology specialists. This is a representation of K through 12 work. And that day was incredibly productive. People had to prepare for it in advance as well as be very productive in the moment. We had also had about 20 to 25 people take a summer course with micro credentialing and AI. So there was a lot of work before that day and it showed because the team was incredibly productive. And I'd like to introduce the team that is representing the group here today. There's a lot of people who were able to attend, but of course, it being a school day, our administrators are in the buildings and a lot of our participants are as well. I'm going to start with Chris and Bill introduce yourself into role and then we'll just go down. And Bill, if you want to move up next to Pam, that'd be great.
Yeah, Chris Packy, you go program coordinator, grade six through eight, social studies. And I've enjoyed being a part of the K I team.
I'm Michael Kiefer, instructional technology specialist in the district. I also teach at the high school and I facilitate the fab lab, our maker space. And I also teach and sort of the curriculum leader on the independent project at my school as well.
Good morning. I'm Leslie Wilpats. I am the world language coordinator for pre-K to eighth grade.
Hi, Mike Ginsberg. I am one of the others, instructional technology specialist in the district. I teach at Paulson Technology Engineering and Design, and I also teach mathematics as well.
Michelle Horn, K 12 curriculum.
Good morning, Christine Justice. I am the program coordinator for mathematics nine through 12.
Pam Kendrick, ELA coordinator.
Bill Summer on the art court.
So you can see lots of disciplines, lots of representation. But where they joined together was a united force in really thinking deeply about how we can be purposeful about our design. We're really proud of the work we're sharing today and feel free to ask questions as we go. The team is very well prepared. The the work that we're sharing with you this morning will touch upon these. We really want to talk about why AI literacy is essential for our students and why we need to be very proactive in working with AI literacy. We have a position statement that we're hoping the board would be able to take action on. We have student and teacher guidelines where you'll see the underpinnings and the philosophy presented this evening. We have a district design that includes an AI task design as well as an AI literacy document. So further ado, we are going to start out with the why.
So we wanted to share some stats. I think even though these are only a year old, I think they probably even changed since that time. But the administration's approach, I think, really aligned with the board's approach. And the board had talked to us about this several years ago about that we would not be able to ignore AI. We would not be able to just, you know, policy it away. But we really needed to embrace it because this is the way the world is going and we needed to be out in front, teach our students. So, you know, these are just some numbers about really, if we don't teach our students, they're going to learn it from other areas. And so it talks about learning it from social media or friends or just Googling it. You know, just kind of playing around with it themselves. And we really want to teach them responsible use. And we also knew we needed to change the way we taught in some ways. You know, the way that our projects are designed or our homework is designed, things like that. So just some stats, you know, if you can go to the next slide. You know, that they, you know, said learns from social media again. You know, this is a year old. I'm guessing if they're not learning through schools or learning through another source, they're going to learn through social media. So I'm guessing that number would be higher today. When we talk to students in the schools, they're they're learning about it, you know, from outside, outside sources. And I think that they recognize, again, this probably would be higher today. But they're recognizing that their their lives are going to be impacted by it, whether it's their their work or how they do college, things like that, they're going to change certainly. And they know that, you know, the adults at school, but in a national study with the students, international study, that the numbers are, you know, show low that the schools are preparing them, you know, and so we need to be out in front of this. And I think that was the board's direction to us as well. So it's a good alignment there. Oh, is this Mike? You're taking over?
Yeah, Mike Ginsberg is going to take it from here.
So we like to think of this slide, our definition for AI literacy as our as our why. That we want students to understand that AI is shaping and will continue to shape the world around them. That it comes with both risks and opportunities. It presents some ethical questions for them. And then also that there's a time to use AI, but we also want them to understand that there's a time now to use AI.
And this is the position statement that the team worked on over time. I do want to recognize Dr. Liz Tagliato also is here today. And Liz and the special ed coordinators were also part of this work across the district. I just want to make sure that their representation is known as well. This position statement started in June with some of the library media specialists and myself really looking at a lot of documents to try to really think about where we fell. And where we fell very clearly was to think about the profile of the graduate areas of critical thinking and decision making as really important and predominant in this work. Really looking at our core belief that AI, artificial intelligence, as a partner, not a substitute for human thought, that was really important to us. And this idea too, you get a very explicit mention of balancing whole child digital fluency with social emotional growth and overall wellness. We did not see AI as a dominant feature beyond balancing this importance of like, what is good wellness in society? And of course, we know that we have to model curiosity, responsible use, and a growth mindset ourselves as learners because AI is so rapidly changing. So this is a real challenge, not only for our students, but for us as educators. And we have to really be mindful about off-screen experiences that support all of those human characteristics that we care about and well-being with the use of AI in educating kids in all aspects of AI. We look at students not only as consumers, but innovators and makers, and AI as a thought partner to be able to help them to do that. You will see that we talk about digital citizenship, but this is actually even more than just digital citizenship. It is a new fluency, a new literacy that we are looking to curate over time. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike and he's going to talk a little bit about founding guidelines that we had are the principles.
Thanks, Gail. So if you think of our AI literacy definition as our why, the guidelines are like our how. And our how is we want to put our values into practice by using AI responsibly. We want the students to also, we want to protect their privacy. And really essential in our guidelines is how we keep the human connection at the center of our instructional practice.
So to continue to continue the work that the literacy team and Gail and special education had done in June, the there were a group that was tasked during our time in August to look at guidelines that would be put towards teachers and students to frame how we would implement AI and really move it forward within our schools. And so there were six pillars that were created that the have been shared with the middle school and the high school teachers as well as the high school students around this use of AI. So I'm just going to kind of go through them. The first one being that AI supports and not replaces the human effort. And so we're looking at the idea that we still want students to be at the center of the learning. So AI can be a great support for what the students would need, but that they are still the center of our learning. That AI encourages growth and not shortcuts. So as our profile graduate really still focuses in on critical thinking and problem solving, we want to help students learn how they can use AI as a tool, brainstorming before they begin writing an assignment, looking at ideas of how they might tackle the problem, but then on their own, making the decision around which approach they're going to take. Using AI to help give them prompts on how they might revise a paper, but not revise it for them. So really establishing the idea that it is a tool, but not to replace them as the critical thinkers and the problem solvers. And then looking at ethical literacy and awareness. So understanding that, you know, one, we have our academic integrity. And so that's super important that we maintain that and that the work is ours. But also understanding that where the material comes from, how AI scrapes every everywhere and kind of provides that information, but looking at how that information got to being out on the web so that it could be scraped and looking at the biases and other impacts that it could have on society. And then we continue looking at the fairness and equity. So ensuring again that teachers help students to question the results, to understand again that fairness, where bias might come from in terms of the scraping. And then also ensuring that we maintain equitable equitable use for our students so that everybody has access to the same resources. And then I think one of the most important ones and has been stated a few times is that human connection at the core, that we as a district really value the relationship and that we understand that the relationship between students and teachers is at the heart of the learning and that AI is not to replace that, but that it's here to support the student growth in as a tool. And then lastly, of course, we would ensure that all of the tools that are used in school have to meet the privacy and data protection policies.
So you can see that we are trying to be thoughtful and mindful about how we approach the presence of AI in teaching and learning. And this this moment is a really good opportunity for us to fully start to make progress in this area before our students are learning and exploring beyond instruction. So we really see these two ideals and these two research frameworks working in tandem. This is our own graphic of how we see things working together. You'll see Leon Fers's work. He calls it the AI assessment scale. We call it task design. That is the inverted pyramid on the right-hand side. And and what he prompts us to think about is the use of AI and task design from absolutely no AI, which you see is present at the bottom of the pyramid to a full exploration. And we'll give you some examples of that as we progress. But the other pyramid talks about foundations of AI, applying AI and stewarding AI. And that actually is from an international document that came out in May of 2025 as a draft that really embraced this idea of being having standards associated with AI literacy and really using those standards in a way that helps students to be well-informed consumers of AI information and users of AI information. So we really took a hard look at that draft put together. And you'll see that we created a guiding document. But the reason why the pyramid is structured in this way, the foundations of AI literacy are the beginning part of our work. And we'd like to think of that foundation being laid at a very early stage before students start exploring AI for planning and collaboration and use. So you could see as the complexity of use goes up, also the education goes alongside of it. I'm going to turn it over to Leslie for a task design.
Yes, good morning. So this is our MPS AI task design. And it was designed and developed to show support on how we would use AI to complete a task. So you can see that there's five different levels, starting off in level one, where there's no AI, all the way up to AI exploration. So I wanted to give you a little bit of insight about what this scale basically will help students and teachers. The AI no integration at level one scales all the way up to AI exploration level five, where students use AI creatively to enhance problem solving, generate novel insights, or develop innovative solutions to solve problems. One part of the scale that I'd like to highlight is looking between levels three and four. The expectations of AI collaboration at level three address engagement with AI on a single element of a specific task. However, if we look at level four, which talks about full AI, this allows students to use AI to complete any element of the task. So an example that I could provide for both is that at level three, students use AI to generate compare strategies to solve a multi-step problem with different different levels of efficiency. However, at level four, where there's full AI, students generate a theory that asks AI to use statistics to prove the relationship theory using several parameters. So there's this is very detailed, but the bigger hope that we have is that we want to build exemplars for modeling purposes for our students and our teachers. So moving forward, we have an idea. So what AI will look like in the classroom.
When we develop any content area, we develop it for transfer for students. So we look at our system as a K pre-K through 12 system. And at the end of 12th grade, we want them to independently be able to use their learning to do important work within that content. So in keeping with content such as science and social studies and ELA and math and world language, we always have what's called a guiding document. And in that guiding document, we're very explicit about what we want students to independently be able to use their learning to do by the time they leave our schools. And you will see in red, the profile of a graduate capacities that are directly related to those transfer goals are highlighted for you and very explicitly stated in red under each transfer goal. But also you'll see the work from that international document and the domains of the standards that are also informing that transfer goal. So for example, I'll I'll take a bullet, you know, at the top. We want our students to independently be able to evaluate information from AI-powered sources to determine what is accurate and relevant while filtering out misinformation and inaccuracies. We feel that's essential for students to be able to independently do by the time they leave 12th grade at Madison Public Schools. So those transfer goals are big and lofty and huge drivers. So beneath that, we need to be really careful that we are crafting experiences and we are being very careful to teach all the way up through our system so they can independently do those those activities. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike and he's going to talk a bit about our foundations.
Yeah. So if we look a little more closely at the three levels of student understanding of AI, it starts with foundations. And really that's about making sure that students understand how AI systems are built, that they're built by human beings. And while it might seem magical at first to see a new, you know, AI generation come out, they really need to understand that it really is a it's a pattern recognition machine. It excels at pattern recognition and then producing statistical probable, statistical probable outcomes. And so as students begin to use AI to gather information, it's really important to understand how to prompt the AI effectively, how to assign it a role, a task, and any necessary details that are going to yield the results that they're looking for, the outcomes that they're throwing in places around. And then as Gail was saying, like, there's such an importance in that understanding how to determine if the AI output is indeed accurate and if it's reliable, is it tainted by any sort of bias in the data that it's been scraping? And, you know, to understand that it may sometimes reflect human biases and, you know, students therefore need to know how to critically critically evaluate its output. And then once they understand how they can actually use AI to break complex problems down into parts and deciding which tasks for this problem should be assigned to an AI versus which part should be assigned to a human, then they're actually ready to start applying some of the AI foundations of the part.
Okay, so the next two slides that you're going to see highlight the four domains within AI that help guide educators and fostering AI literacy. Well, I'm going to highlight the middle part of that pyramid, what Mike just said, the applying AI, which involves both engaging with it and creating with it. And each of these domains equip our learners with knowledge and skills and the attitudes in order to navigate it appropriately, responsibly, and effectively. So the first one is engaging with AI. And this really focuses on helping students understand AI's role in society while encouraging them to critically think about its application and implications. This is really where our teachers will help students learn to have help students learn how to think critically in order to verify their accuracy while recognizing the bias and ensuring the ethical use of AI. And when we think about engaging with AI and we think about our profile of graduate, we're really thinking about critical thinking, global thinking, particularly citizenship, and collaboration and communication. Now moving over to the right with creating with AI. We've heard this a little bit in the presentation, but the purpose of this domain is really to empower students to learn to use AI as a creative partner rather than a shortcut so that they can help them generate content and solve problems to design and innovate. And some examples of that might be, and you know, we're working on this with teachers now in the curriculum world, but in the arts, that might look like exploring color themes, lighting or composition in a photography class. And we are working on that right now. In English, drafting or remixing poetry or short stories or essays to explore different writing styles or voices. And in science, that might even be modeling environmental or biological data to predict trends. So we try to think about, you know, real-world application where students can create and use that application with AI. In that creating phase, we really emphasize authorship, originality, and purpose. And when we think about the alignment with the profile of graduate, we're really thinking about creative thinking and collaboration in that part of that. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Mike to talk a little bit about the next part, which is stewarding AI.
So like I was stewarding stewarding AI, we're talking about students managing the AI and then designing with AI. So managing AI involves applying the foundations that, you know, I talked about earlier, deciding how and when AI should be used. So at this level of of use, students are applying their critical thinking capacities of inquiry, going back to like, all right, I know how to prompt it now. So now trying to gather information from disparate sources and trying to synthesize that. Analyzing the information that they curate through the AI is also very important. And then it's also where some of the creative thinking capacities of design and idea generation starts coming into play. Designing with AI takes our creative thinking and collaboration and communication capacities to new levels as they begin to collect and curate data in order to train an AI model for an intended first purpose. So right now, the one place I've seen that actually happen is in the independent projects, where we have an independent project student for his projects. He wanted to explore AI systems and how to train an AI system through some machine learning. So he was feeding his AI program data about a specific publicly traded stock and wanted to see if he could give his program that he designed data about recent trends in stock price to see if it can make accurate predictions about future stock prices. So, you know, he he was working with a limited amount of data, but it was really great that he was understanding like how AI systems are built. I think this is so vital for our students to understand because right now AI systems are being built without, you know, any regulations, kind of like trusting corporations that are making it to have our best interest in mind. And so our students are the AI designers of tomorrow. So if they can start to understand how to design AI, design with AI, I think that that's only going to be beneficial to our society at large.
So that concludes our our presentation. We certainly are interested in any questions that you have. We are very clear about what our next steps will be to address AI literacy. We're hoping that the board would consider adopting the position statement that was shared with the board and also recognize AI literacy as a curricular content area. So we can start purposely designing and carrying through with the standards that we have identified in educating our students in a thoughtful and mindful way. But I'm I'm welcoming any questions that might have for the team or itself. And I just have to thank the team once again to have the team that's representing everybody here today. They they speak so knowledgeably from a position of an educator and the importance of this subject, but it's new to them too. And they come with a very open mind, but also recognizing the importance of this topic and that we need to address it for our students as as carefully as we address any other content areas. I want to thank you all and just, you know, to also state that we only rehearsed this like 10 minutes. So that there's nothing wrong is is really their deep understanding of what we're doing and why we're doing it. So thank you all.
Well, I have my big question is always, if I've used AI, I love AI, is I understand this is all the student's responsibility.
How will you know that they're using it correctly or, you know, according to the guidelines?
I think the I I always think about the task design. I think the goal is to stay in front of that so that we're giving the parameters to students to help them use it responsibly. So if you think about our stage two and our assessments, you know, we may need to rethink how we do assessments. If it's a summative math assessment, well, we're we don't want students using AI to solve algorithms. But if it's a performance-based assessment, we may say this is really a task that's at a level three, and we want you to collaborate with AI. So I think part of that is training the teachers and the students and all of us. I mean, this is new for us too, on how we use this task design to out and stay ahead of that. So it's not about the the catching the kid using it. It's more about how do we stay in front of it in a way that makes sense for both students and teachers? So I think that's something that we've been talking about.
And I would add to that, that if we do nothing, then we're sure that they're not using AI correctly. So an absence of it in our classrooms just leads to misuse and uninformed use of AI.
I would say too, I was in Mr. Ginsberg's classroom yesterday. So the the task was actually to use AI to develop a a video game, you know, a a program. And so I imagine before that would have taken a lot longer to get into that actual game design, task design, but he was able to get them right into it. And the two boys that I was sitting next to had, they were like, we've done some of this before. They were like, ready to go. It was a immediate, that was day one of class. And they don't miss a thing, like they they just saw all this stuff in in Google Classroom. And they're like, oh, yes, Mr. Ginsberg was up at 5:30 in the morning. You know, he always said something, you know, so they just think they don't they don't miss a thing.
And I guess I'll preface that. So we've been learning about AI though through analog means. So we had, yesterday was our first day actually using the computers. And the very first lessons we had, we talked about doing hard things, about why sometimes going through the struggle is important for your own personal growth. And we tie that back into, again, why sometimes you use AI and sometimes you don't. And the kids really, really gain that knowledge of why it's important for them not to take the easy road. We talked about the the love and the suffer and how that's kind of your natural, you know, gravitation towards and why sometimes it's important to struggle with that and really put in the effort and not take the easy road of using AI to generate that for you. So I think that's really important that as we build the foundation for the kids that we've been talking about, that that's also instilled within them.
I think the other important thing outside of, you know, subject areas that lend themselves naturally like computer science, but, you know, to the more traditional core areas, like making sure that teachers know how to, you know, check to see if their assessments are durable in the face of AI is something that, you know, we're going to be exploring a lot across the district so that, you know, the assessments are designed such that, you know, they may call for some use of AI or not. But we're, you know, we can ensure that it's not an assessment that can just be easily done through the shortcut of AI. So I personally redesigned an assessment where I had students writing an annotated bibliography for their independent project research. And I realized just because, you know, my my teacher like spidey senses went off a few times with like, this doesn't sound like something that this kid wrote. I realized that it's probably not the most durable assessment. So I had AI help me redesign that assessment. And so now I'm I'm just getting in drafts of this of the equivalent assessment change to be more durable. And the students writing for their research reflection logs that they're doing now are so much more thoughtful and so much more personalized. So, you know, it's tweaking assessments like that that will allow us to make sure that students aren't using it as a shortcut.
We've been using Google, I mean, that's yeah.
But it's a tool, right?
Yeah.
So we talk about that human connection, and that's still at the core. So that for us is our focus. AI is going to be just an additional tool and how to use it properly.
So great presentation, and I really, I thank you for that. Listening to it, listening to you present and a lot of this material, you know, I've become familiar with and, you know, some of it came from our retreat. But I sat here going, this is way more than a presentation on AI. There's something far more important that is embedded in this process that is demonstrated beautifully today, which is an indicator of the health and development of this district and the culture that has been cultivated over multiple years that involve the educators and their beliefs and their thoughts and their talents into the process of curriculum development. What it shows is flexibility and the ability to adjust. It shows innovation. It shows a level of fluency and managing change that is absolutely critical to any organization going into the future, but is extraordinarily rare in school systems on any of these points. That coupled with what came through multiple times through this presentation is the beliefs and values that you hold personally and this district holds is the driver of the work that we do in this district and this particular effort underscored with a foundation idea that is critical that was said by a couple of you folks, which is what drives our work is relationship between teacher and students. And there's tons of evidence that demonstrates that is the key to profound and authentic learning. But the fact that you can take a curricular area that is entirely novel, new, changing, literally daily, embrace it without losing the foundational standards of what is important is extraordinary. And I underscore that, you know, because I've been in education a long time and I'm somehow becoming an old male. But districts change. Leadership changes. Superintendent's come and go, hopefully not for a long time, but what you have is so valuable and so rare. And I appreciate that people put in time over the summer and invest. But I say to you as someone who's been in this business a long time, protect this and nurture it through changes that invariably come. It is the key to the success of this district. It is the key to making your work joyful and one that you feel proud of. And it deserves nurturing and protection. Because this was a presentation about AI, but it was not a presentation about AI as far as I'm concerned. It's much, much more. And you don't get to this fluency with working on an issue without building very strong foundations that build and rely on the talents of our people and involving them in the process. You know, and I have the added experience, you know, that I've worked with lots of districts, you know, in a consultant role, in a coach role, whatever. The vast majority, not, you know, not that it's really important to compare, but for you to appreciate the value of it is, in most cases, it'll be, here's the work this team did on AI, implement it. You and I both know that doesn't work. What does work is this, you know, it's clear in the presentation. Yeah, this is the beginnings. It's going to change constantly and evolve. Okay, but you own it. So I salute the work the district's done to get to this place. And I salute all of you for your investment and commitment and encourage you embrace this, appreciate the value of it. It's extraordinarily rare.
So we are, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody online?
Anyone would like to make a comment, please raise your hand.
Anything else?
Anybody?
I don't think we need to go the formal process, but I ask you, Harold, as we're forum at this point, our plan to advance this to the whole board for adoption. Okay, folks, I know you have lots to do.